All right, it is 7:01. I'm calling to order the December 11th, 2019 Warren County Planning Commission meeting. First item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I believe you've adopted the agenda.
Second. Motion is second. Any other questions, concerns, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Please make sure all of your mic's are on.
I think that's all.
I'm sorry, I meant to say that earlier. All right, next item is approval of the regular meeting minutes of November 13th, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the regular meeting minutes of November 13th, 2019.
Sorry.
Motion is second. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Disposed? Motion carries. Next item is public presentations. Public presentations are limited to issues that are not included on the meeting agenda. It is intended as an opportunity for the public to give input on relevant planning issues and not intended as a question and answer, period. Does anyone wish to come up and speak at this time? Seeing no one come forward, we will move on with the meeting. Next item is public hearings. The first, actually the only public hearing we have tonight is 2019-11, excuse me, -01, Stephen Aaron, a request for a conditional use permit for a short-term tourist rental. The property is located at 1174 River Ridge Drive, in the River Ridge, on the Shenandoah subdivision and identified on tax map 11E as lot 5. The property is agricultural and located in the North River Magisterial District. And I believe that is Mr. Woodland.
That is correct. Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. This property owner recently purchased the property and due some additional expenses that incurred during the initial renovations of the dwelling and some future planned improvements, he is requesting this conditional use permit to supplement some of the income to offset those costs. During, after the application process, we submitted this for a request for comments to Warren County Building Official, Mr. Bean, and in that research, they found that the property and the structure had not been issued a certificate of occupancy. The applicant had been notified about this and is currently working with building inspections and the health department for the required necessary permits, inspections, and requirements for the CO. The future land use map does, and comprehensive plan, does allow for agricultural land uses in this zoning district, which a short-term tourist rental is allowed by conditional use permit. And this subdivision does have, it's zoned agricultural, has some larger lots. The terrain of the property is fairly steep and it's primarily woodlands. The applicant has submitted some of the paperwork for his septic system, which originally was approved for what we saw was three and maybe four. We're waiting on a conditional permit from the health department for that. The occupancy at three bedrooms would be limited to six persons. The property owner would be required to have a property management plan and has submitted a preliminary one. He is going to have a property management company manage the property since he does live in Maryland, so they would basically be the point of contact for any problems that might occur on the property. And that would be provided in the property management plan and to the POA and any adjacent property owners, so that if there were any issues, they could call them. We have submitted, we have a letter submitted by the River Ridge Property Owners Association. They have listed a number of concerns before they could basically support this application. The Property Owners Association did submit that December 5th, 2019, and the POA president is here this evening, if you have any questions to him. The property does meet the setback requirement of 100 feet. The closest adjacent property is 352 feet to the east. During the request for comments in the posting of the property, the property owners, some of the adjacent property owners and property owners along River Ridge Road, found out about the, well, obviously, were either notified or found out about the public hearing, and they have submitted us, to us, I think approximately eight or nine letters of concern, basically not supporting the application, which I have included in your packets. You should have received a few today that were submitted yesterday. I would like to just, I know I'm kind of going long, but I'd like to just go over some of those concerns that were provided by the POA, so we could address those now, and then any others that come up during the public hearing, we can address at that time. So one of the concerns basically was that because it is a gated community, and this is a primary concern, and I certainly, I let the property owner know this, that you wouldn't want to be giving out the combination code to just any and all your guests. So the property owner came up with a solution that they would have a kind of electronic clicker that could open it, and there would be, it would be in like a little lockbox adjacent to the gate, and that the guests would be given a code to that, okay? They would have to return that clicker to the lockbox before they left, and then if they didn't, then they would be charged a fee, but they would still not know the code, combination code, to the gate, so that would, that was his solution that he provided. This information would be also put in their property management plan. Number two, the POA requested that the boundaries be marked so that trespassing, people wouldn't just wander over into other people's property. That is a part of our supplemental regulations. County staff would check on this during the site visit. Number three, speed limit would be listed in the property management plan. They were requesting that the guests be kept at a 15-mile speed limit. Well, that's something that planning zone, they can't really enforce. They are private roads. I'm not sure if the sheriff department can even enforce it in this subdivision. But they would, that would be listed in the property management plan, which we could verify that, and report it to the property owner, property manager, if there were issues, or even to the Property Owners Association. They could address that, and that's about the best we could do with that. Trash was a concern, about leaving trash outside of the property. We have put a condition on the permit, and I'll read those conditions here in a moment, that will address that issue. And then prohibiting of outdoor fires was a concern. That would also be a condition, and we will put that in the, owner would have to put that in the property management plan. They also had concerns about parties, large parties, and noise emanating from that, and that, basically, the occupancy, because it's limited to the occupancy of the septic system, the occupancy for the, the short-term tourist rental will be limited there, and the noise ordinance is required as a supplemental regulation to be provided for the guests. And again, I just would prefer to go over these, so we can address those issues now. Prohibit, they requested that fire harms and hunting would be prohibited. This is not a subdivision that in the zoning ordinance is listed as a subdivision where shooting and hunting is prohibited, okay? So county staff can't do that, and I don't know if sheriff's department would be able to enforce that either. We could have, ask him to put it in his property management plan, and from an enforcement standpoint, that's the most we could do. But it would be up to the property owner and the property management company to address that. The use of fireworks, they had a concern about. We could put that as a condition. We have put that as a condition before in the permits. And then also the prohibition of recreational vehicles such as ATVs and four-wheelers. Again, that would be listed in the property management plan and enforced by the owner and property manager, okay? So if the Planning Commission is to move this forward, I'll just mention, conditions one through five and 10 are the conditions that we've placed on previous conditional use permits. So conditions six through nine are ones specific to this property. Condition one, the applicant shall comply with all Warren County Health Department, Warren County Building Inspections, and Virginia Statewide Prevention Code, regulations and requirements. Number two, the maximum number of occupants shall not exceed six, as determined according to health department permit, conditional permit for three-bedroom dwelling. Number three, the applicant shall have well water tested annually for E. coli and E. coli bacteria, and copy of the results shall be submitted to planning and health departments. Number four, the applicant shall have the septic system inspected annually by a state licensed inspector, and a copy of the results shall be submitted to planning and health departments. The system shall also be serviced every five years, as recommended by the health department, and a copy of the service invoice shall be provided to the planning department. Number five, the property shall be in compliance with Section 18056.4 of Warren County zoning ordinance regarding the supplemental regulations for short-term tourist rentals, which include a property management plan to be submitted to the planning department prior to staff issuing a certificate of zoning for this use. Number six, the applicant shall list all restrictions identified in the River Ridge Property Owners Association letter dated December 2nd, 2019, in the property management plan. It shall be submitted to guests with an agreement that they have read and understand the restrictions, and shall be kept on record by the property management agency and made available to the planning department during the annual review. Number seven, the use of fireworks and open outdoor campfires shall be prohibited. Number eight, all trash and garbage relating to the use shall be stored inside the dwelling prior to transferring it to the Warren County convenience site, and property shall be kept free of trash and debris. And number nine, the applicant shall be issued a certificate of occupancy for the dwelling from building inspections prior to being issued a certificate of zoning for the planning department or the business license. And number 10, the applicant shall register with the Commissioner of Revenues Office for transient logic tax purposes. This public hearing has been properly advertised. Adjacent property owners have been notified. The property itself was posted according to Warren County Code, Section 18061, Section E., and 18063. That requires posting of the property. There were some concerns by a community property owner that we had not posted the public hearing appropriately, so I just wanted to mention that. And that's all I have at this time, if you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions before I open the public hearing? All right. I'll open the public hearing. We have a sign-up sheet and the first folks that signed up is Jack and Vivian Polakonis, if I can say that correctly. And if you wish to get up and speak, you can at this time.
Do you normally make it sound like it's a video?
Well, it's a comment now? Is it our turn?
Yeah.
It was very well done, by the way.
And if you could take your name and address, please, sir.
Vivian Polakonis. We reside in 873 River Ridge Drive, Middletown, Virginia, 22645. I just have a few things to say. We bought into that community 23 years ago. We are the first residents to build in that community. We bought in that community because it was a gated residential private community. We have grandchildren. A lot of us now that live there are older than have grandchildren. We are having, I am having a problem with the management of this property. Stephen, the guy who now owns the property, very ambitious, and when I went down to greet them as a neighbor, I was very impressed. I was so happy to have a family with three lovely children as my neighbors, as my, well, neighbors in a home that would be a home away from home, because they are from Maryland. And really, when we, the rest of the neighbors heard that we were getting a really nice family, we felt pretty good about it. And so I don't have a problem with B&Bs or Air B&Bs or anything like that, but not in my private gated residential community. And I don't trust a property management company. I don't think that they're going to monitor it as much as I think they should. That's my personal opinion. I don't even know who the property management company is going to be. So as a resident there, and I do have grandchildren that come, and a lot of our residents have grandchildren there now, but again, we just were happy that, thinking we were going to get a nice, normal family. Short-term rental, I'm not comfortable with that, and that's pretty much how I feel. And I know our restricted covenants, there's nothing in our restricted covenants that say anything about short-term rent. I don't think even just plain rental, okay? My other problem was, as I spoke to my neighbors, they were not aware of what was going on with that property, and they all said, why wasn't the notice posted in the front of the property, so all the neighbors and residents and property owners could see? Yes, he did address that. And I think that it should have been also, because Stephen's property, Mr. Aaron's property, is way in the back, and that's where it's posted, about the public hearing and all. But anyway, that's really all I have to say.
I understand that, but we can both, for a while, but.
Thank you.
I understand, thank you.
Okay.
If you have something to say, sir. Take your name and address, please, sir.
Jack Polakonis, 873 River Ridge Drive, Middletown, Virginia. My comments are more that of the way this was done. The sweep, I mean, it was a bona fide sneak attack, as I said. I mean, this, it wasn't, it wasn't four properties that are affected, okay? It's 15 properties that are affected, every one from the gate all the way to the two miles to get to, almost two miles to get to Mr. Aaron's property. And why wasn't, well, my wife asked, why wasn't this addressed in the October state of meeting? Since it hasn't been, why don't we just wait till the next state of meeting, so it can be done properly? That's the next October. That'd be fine with me. It'd give Mr. Aaron plenty of time to get everything done, and I have this plan and everything lined up. I don't really have any objections to this. I have objections that everything that's been done and how it's been done, it's not transparent, it's not even an attempt at transparency. And while it's not the planning board's problem, we do have River Ridge on the Shenandoah as, has a big problem, because there was no notification. As we did this, we found out more and more people, they said, what? 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 Come on. That isn't how, that isn't how you run. And please, what else I've got here? I prevented this, and I thought, I thought you guys all got one of these, but apparently you didn't. I mean, I can sympathize with Mr. Aaron as far as trying to recoup some of the investments, but Mr. Aaron is a businessman, and he owns a company, or is the managing director of a lobbying company, and, and he knows due diligence in what it is. And it seems to me that there was never any attempt at doing due diligence in this regard. This was, like I said, a pure, simple sneak attack. And let's look it through. He could have prevented it before the October state of meeting, and it would have been, at least the people would have known, so they could have commented, regardless of whether they went to the meeting or not. And it didn't happen. That's why my recommendation would, to just approve the application, table this, though such a time as the voting, results of the United, or the next state that annual meeting on the River Ridge Property Owners Association itself, start October.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, there. All right, the other applicant that, well, applicant signed up, Stephen Aaron, if he could come up and speak at this time, that'd be fine. Please take your name and address to the record, sir.
Stephen Aaron, 1174 River Ridge Drive, Middletown, Virginia. Apologies, but there's a lot to cover, since it might take a minute. First of all, all the conditions that the POA recommended for this rental, except for one, I actually recommended to the POA and to the county. So I just wanted to state that I am fully in support of all of them. The one that I did not recommend, Mr. Peg Gill got from one of the other neighbors, and I said, yeah, I'm happy to, and that was to keep neighbors from driving around in the middle. So, yeah, happy to do that. So I just want to say, I'm in full support of all the conditions that the POA asked for. I actually recommended it myself, because I want this to be as non-intrusive on the neighbors as possible. The second thing is, is that the operational permit on the septic actually got approved today. So I had Greg and Jim from the health department out, they looked it over. I'll get to that in a little bit, but you know, part of Mr. Polakonis' is that I didn't do my due diligence. The due diligence was done excellently, I'll go through that a little more, a little bit. But it was impossible to know that the only thing missing on the operational permit was the signature, because everything on the construction permit had been checked off. There was one no to the bottom, and it didn't have a signature on it, and there was no way for anybody to know. And so that's what happened on the operational permit on the septic. Building permits is a whole nother issue. But so, had Greg and Jim out, got me an operational permit, I'm doing the best I can to actually get all those permits in order. So, I purchased 1174 River Ridge Drive in April. I thought I did with my eyes wide open. We knew the previous owners were extremely problematic, as any neighbors in the neighborhood will tell you, they were not just problematic, they were horrible neighbors for years on end, who created lots of security situations, very bad neighbors. As the reservations began, the problems began to get worse and worse. What we knew were loose floor tiles in the master bathroom was actually a shower that had been leaking since 2008, rotting the subfloor and causing the tile to pop. This causes us to move from fixing some floor tile to, and cleaning the bathroom, to forcing us to rip out the entire bathroom, the subfloor, reinforce the rotted floor joists, and put in an entirely new bathroom. The reason I know that it had been leaking since 2008 was the county had noted in their building, in their plumbing inspection, that the shower was leaking in 2008. So that's 15 years of a shower leaking, where the previous owners just never decided to address it, and I had to go in and fix it. There are many more similar instances that forced massive budget overruns, being forced to replace an entire kitchen because the cabinets were crumbling from the inside, replacing a water heater, softener, and pressure tank because none of it had been maintained. Had to replace every gutter in the house because the previous owners had drilled holes in the gutters, and it's a lock cabin. You have water running outside of the lock cabin. We originally did not intend to rent the cabin, but as necessary remediations piled up, our cash flow began to run a little dry. We began looking at the option of renting the cabin as a possible solution to the cash crunch, due to the condition of property the previous owners left it in. As I noted in the materials I submitted to the county, I would like to continue to invest in this piece of property, continue to upgrade it, and have plans to do so, but cash has run dry. Then come to find out, the previous owners never finished the final inspections on the house, and the house has no certificate of occupancy. So I've talked with Jackie and Paula at the Planning Commission, working on getting those inspections done and getting that up to speed as well. Just to be clear about how I use the property and how I would intend it to be used by renters, my family has grown to love the cabin. And as neighbors can attest, we spend a good amount of time out there, and we would even if we were granted a short-term rental permit. We use it mostly to just swim in the river, enjoy being outdoors, enjoy our family out there with friends, and have a good time and eat some good meals, and it's, it's good to get kids out of, well, we're very close to Washington DC, so it's good to get them out of there. This is exactly the same intended use we would have for renters, to go, enjoy being outdoors, swim in the river, and enjoy having some family and friends around. We, the vast majority of River Ridge's residents never know when I am there and when I'm not, nor do I have any idea when anybody else is around, because of the size of pieces of property. Just as when I am there, I would expect most folks never to know whether I'm there or not, it would be the same when a renter is there. Also, if the permit is granted, we would not rent the cabin full-time. We really enjoy being out here and intend to stay a regular presence in the neighborhood, because it's so enjoyable for our family and friends. But renting the cabin through a short-term rental while we are not there seems to be a great way to recover some of the budget overruns caused by the previous owner. I know there are some concerns about a few residents of River Ridge, so let me comment on those directly. The first is that I am not local. That is true, but as Ms. Polakonis can attest, I'm very available. I said hello to her at 2 o'clock this afternoon. That's a Wednesday during the work week, but yet I was able to come out here, do a few things at the house, and still attend this meeting. I'm very available. As most people who have communicated with me, whether it's Mr. Windling, or Polakonis' or Mr. Peg Gill, I'm very responsive to email and phone calls. They all get returned, and it all gets done very quickly. The property management company that I have enlisted is ShinRent, which is headquartered in Loray and has rentals all of the now sitting in O'Val. They are the premier rental company. They have, they assign one specific person to each property to manage that property, to make sure that any guest concerns are taken care of, the house gets cleaned correctly, that any issues are taken care of. Additionally, I have the entire exterior of the cabin monitored 24/7 by live Wi-Fi video. Anytime any motion sensor is set off, I get a video sent directly to my phone. So if there's a stray cat that walks past the house, I get a notice on my phone immediately. I can see how many cars in the parking lot. If we've rented the cabin out and too many guests are showing up, I'm going to know long before it becomes an issue, before even the neighbors know, because I will be seeing the people coming and going from the house. Additionally, we have five years of running a short-term rental out of our basement in our current home. It's in active rental right now. We have regular guests, and we get incredible reviews. We have even been listed as a super host, which is reserved for a very few, the highest-rated rentals on Airbnb. I submitted in the package the link to the properties. If you want to go see our rental in Chevrolet, you can see exactly how it gets rented, and you can see the reviews on the property. If we were able to run a rental out of our own home that we live in without causing trouble to ourselves or our neighbors, we would certainly be able to do so on a 20-acre parcel property. The rental we currently run is so successful largely because we control it so tightly for guests.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Can you wrap this up in about a minute?
I will speed it up. We want to rent.
I'm trying to be fair to the other folks.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
At the same time, that's what I'm after.
Oh, got it.
If you understand.
Yeah, absolutely. We want to, we want this cabin to be a very high-end rental. We intend to charge over $400 a night, that's what we'd hope to get, we wouldn't know until we put up for rental. We regularly deny guests because they don't fit what we're looking for. If we had three 24-year-olds say, hey, we're looking for a weekend away, you're getting denied. If we have a family that says, hey, we want to come out here and enjoy the river and drink some wine, you're in. That's how we run the rental at home, and that's how we run this one. We have obviously way too much invested in this property to let some teenagers or some college kids come wreck it for a weekend. So we're not involved in that. The only thing we want are people who want to come have a peaceful time out here. Through my conversations with Mr. Windling, the county has about 50 short-term rentals and has no complaints from neighboring properties, no. Pace County has 250 short-term rentals and is growing. If Pace County was having problems with short-term rentals, they would have a crisis on their hands. But they don't. They continue to permit short-term rentals because they're good for the owners and good for the county. Another concern is the gated, is the gate. As I said, as Mr. Windling said, I proposed to put a garage door opener As I said, as Mr. Windling said, I proposed to put a garage door opener and a lockbox in front. Any other reasonable solution, I'm open to that. As far as the code, it's not the gate that makes the neighborhood safe. The code is currently in the hands of just about every contractor, and every house cleaner, and every friend and family member in Warren County. And due to the previous owners, it's in the hands of some drug dealers in Warren County. So it's not the code that makes the neighborhood safe, it's the people inside it. And we want to be good, safe neighbors, and we would only rent this to good, safe neighbors. We intend to create an environment where it's only rented to good, safe neighbors. And if it was a problem, then we would stop renting it. Let me just address one last thing real quick, if that's all right?
Very quick.
Very quick. To Mr. Polakonis' points, this was not a sneak attack. I spoke with Mr. Windling at length before I ever applied. I took the materials to Mr. Petten Gill before I applied. I tried to do this as openly and fairly as possible. Some of his concerns are concerns about the county process that I can't really address. But I've tried to do this, and Mr. Windling can say, we've had many, many conversations at length. I've tried to do it as openly and as fairly as possible. So, thank you. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Public hearing is still open. Does anyone else wish to come up and speak at this time? We have no one signed up, but does anyone else wish to come up and speak at this time? Yes, sir? Please state your name and address for record.
I am Julia Petten Gill, and I live at 1223 River Ridge Drive. I am not only the president of the River Ridge Property Owners Association, but I am also the nearest neighbor to the property in question. Okay? And I have lived through the past that Mr. Aaron referred to with the previous property owner, which was not at all pleasant. And the only thing I want to say is that in this, the association was asked for comments on this proposal. And we did not receive any information about the proposal itself until after the association's annual meeting, okay? So it was not possible to bring it up before the membership of the association. But we did, I did draft a letter in response to the request for comments, and I ran it by the other board members, and they approved it, stating the conditions, many of which I took from the materials that Mr. Aaron gave me. If I had my druthers as the nearest neighbor, I would prefer not to have a short-term rental business operating in that house. But there's nothing in the association's covenants that specifically prohibits a property owner from doing something like this. And as the president of the association and other board members, we have to balance the rights of an individual property owner to do as he wishes within county policy and state policy, et cetera, and the concerns of the community. And we tried to do the best we could with that letter, to achieve that balance. And that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to come up and speak for or against this application at this time? If no one comes forward, I will close the public hearing. And we will now leave it up to the commission to discuss, decide, and vote. Does anyone have any comments, questions, concerns? Mr. Windling may be able to address some of those as fast as he can.
It's a tough one again.
Yep. They always are.
In our past, the, you know, we've seen some deplorable homes, general farms, other parts of the county, and the problem was a long-term rental. You get somebody in there that probably couldn't purchase a home, not to class anybody by how much they make or whatever, but it seems like every time we had discussion in here, I had them from a high note, and went on a 25-minute rant about all the covenants, and all the state, and all the laws, and the fires, and, you know, my question was, you know, how many weeks, you know, when does this happen, and why does somebody call the Sheriff's Department? And then after the rant, it was, well, this guy was a long-term rent. This guy was there for a year or two. And with a long-term rental, which, that's just living in the home, we can't deny that, that's by a law. So he could rent us out on a year lease, and you could get a horrible, horrible renter. And he couldn't get rid of him. You can't get rid of him as long as he pays your rent, unless he's breaking some, committing some heinous crime that could be jailed for. But under, in some of these places where a short-term rental was put into place, if the property was left in a very deplorable condition, obviously wouldn't rent, you wouldn't come out from the city to rent, to spend a nice week, a weekend, out of the city in a trashy, rough-looking place. So typically, these homes are better kept. A long-term rental, nobody's, nobody keeps track of that, or they mow the grass, even though it might be on the lease, and what happens to the trash, and the bags of trash, and dump that stuff all in the yard. But to keep it a rental product, most of these things are kept resting. If not, it can't get the money. Believe it or not, I do, I did several jobs in your subdivision, and I do get that it is kind of a tight-knit community, that, you know, everybody kind of knows everybody. And I feel that. That's why this decision would be hard for me. And then the other thing that experienced that I've had with these guys, we've been through this so many times, so many questions. Our state Supreme Court has ruled this as a non-commercial activity. It's just living in a home, even though it's only week by week. I've had other complaints, hey, this is commercial activity. State government says no. And then the other thing, I don't think it was in your covenants anyway, but we've also had the covenants thing come up a lot of times. In the county, believe it or not, cannot enforce your covenants. You have to do it with attorneys, judges, the Sheriff's Department. So those reasons are not given us for denial. And then I am a big land rights guy, you know, I do think if you buy a piece of property within reason, if you're not detrimental to the neighbors, you should pretty much be able to do what you want to. But same time in the background, I get that everybody kind of knows everybody, and, you know, I don't know, I think you can rent this thing if it's 15 weeks a year, you know, that means there'll be somebody come through the gate, and you'll have that uneasy feeling of wonder who they are. And I get, so that's why I'm so mixed about this, you know, because I do, I know your neighborhood a little bit, you know, I've been there. Consequently, the gatecode thing is the dumbest one up to high note. Everybody in the county knows it, he's 100% correct. I know it, every subcontractor knows it. But the gate is what the gate does do, somebody that's never been there, you know, let's explore this, what's back in here, they can't get in. So there is some level of security, but, yeah, if somebody wants in back, nothing can find to catch it. Which is a shame, but I don't kind of police that for high note with you guys either. But I'm open for any, any push one way or the other from any of the rest of you guys.
Thank you, sir. I was, I was going to make the point also that General Assembly does not consider this a business. Also, too, the one thing I hear, the description is conditional use permit. If Mr. Aaron violates any of these conditions, it can be yanked. I know I was being nitpicky, but-
Can I say something?
Public hearing is closed. Public hearing is closed, Mr. Sir. But there is an opportunity if he violates something, or the company that oversees it, if he's hired a local company that oversees it, they violate, which ultimately falls back on him. If that's violated, then they can yank the permit as needed. Is that correct, Mr. Windling?
That's correct.
There's nothing blocking us in a comprehensive plan. Can you use that as a reasonable doubt?
My big concern, to tell you the truth, is just the gate. And I understand a gated community, I don't live in one. I live near there, but I don't live in a gated community. But my biggest concern, and if I was a resident in a gated community, my biggest concern would obviously be the gate, who has the access code, who gets in and out. So I totally understand that. So if there's a resolution to get that squared away, that they don't have to go out their main code, regardless of high note, because everybody knows that.
He's given the scripture with a lot of love.
I know, but if there's a-
If there's a better one, for sure.
If there's any type of way to get them around that, then I feel better about that for existing residents, so that's my concern. Anybody else have any other comments, concerns?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm concerned about the occupancy permit. I was concerned about that, that the authorization to advertise. And what I'm gathering here tonight is that hasn't not been taken care of?
I don't know.
Maybe that's not been taken care of, Matt.
Sounds like they signed off for it now. I haven't gotten that information. I did speak with Mr. Aaron about this last week. The issue that we see is, well, one place, it says occupancy of three bedroom, and then the other place it says four bedroom, okay? So I'm waiting for that sign-off, and-
If you don't mind me asking, who are you seeing that from, building inspections or health department?
I'm seeing one of the original health department paperwork that was provided, okay? So I was-
How does it determine what the occupancy is?
Right, right. So I was kind of waiting for them and for Mr. Aaron to get that information to me with their signature basically saying, this is what it is. We can, if it's four, we can add that, we can change that to a four-bedroom with eight-person max occupancy.
Or a three-bedroom conditional.
Or a three-bedroom conditional, that would be an eight-person occupancy. Right, right. So that, that, it's, we'll get that information from Mr. Aaron, and get that documentation, make sure that's in the Board of Supervisors packets if this is moved forward, and we'll make those changes on the conditions of the permit.
Has the building permit been finalized out? Because that was a-
He's still working, he's just submitted that information, and they're waiting on a number of things, and one of being which was the septic system information for them, because that's a requirement for the building permit. I'm not sure exactly what the status of it is as of today, but he has made headway on applying for these permits to get things taken care of.
They will not get the CO until the health department has signed off, so that's-
Building inspections as well.
Yeah, health department's got to go first, and then-
And then they go from building inspections.
No way this could be issued until it's completely, all his permits are 100% done, that's conditioned.
That's correct. That's an added condition due to the specific property and the nature of this, so we would not even issue a certificate of zoning for him to start the business if it's approved by the Board of Supervisors until everything, they met all conditions. And the CO, he has that CO, and the other additional-
Condition number nine, it's like it's pretty clear on that. Yeah, health department gets everything, CO is issued, all the conditions are there, and then whether we vote up or down tonight, or what the board does with it after that, that's all, you know-
The property management plan- Does need to be approved by county staff, reviewed and approved by county staff to meet those requirements. That is how we can enforce. We can make sure that that plan is appropriate, meets all the concerns of the P O A and the conditions of the permit, okay? And that gives us standing to, if, if they are not complied with, if that's not done, then the county can take measures if we get reports and complaints about violations of the, of the permit, okay?
Okay, I have one other concern, and when you were describing it, it kind of went beyond me a little bit, I'm sorry. On the hunting and shooting in there. I know our subdivision just went through and passed no recreational shooting, and hunting has always been prohibited there. What is it at this subdivision?
These are code sections that we don't, we don't enforce because they're not zoning. I believe it's Code Section 77. And you have to be listed in those code sections. One is weapons, which is shooting, the other is hunting. You have to have your subdivision listed in that, and the Board of Supervisors are the ones that approve that, in order for that to be legally enforceable by the county. Right now, if it's not there, we, we as zoning probably would not enforce, it would be Sheriff's Department.
I understand.
Okay.
What is the status of that subdivision?
They're not in, they're not in either one. I checked that, yeah.
Hunting, somebody could go hunting in that subdivision.
Unless it is prohibited in their property, their restrictive covenants, which they enforce, not us, they enforce. But we're not-
He could also restrict it in his rental agreement.
Right.
Well, I think he said that. Didn't he, isn't that in there?
He worked that, he said he would be glad to put that in there, and that's what he submitted to the P O A. And he does not want people hunting or shooting on his property.
So that's in there?
Yes.
Okay.
That answers my questions.
All right, thank you, sir. Anybody else at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I with the Planning Commission forward this application to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation to approve the conditional use permit request of Stephen J. Aaron Jr. for a short-term tourist rental with the conditions as recommended by staff.
Second.
The motion is second. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. It will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors at their next-
January 1st.
Go to the new board.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry. What's the-
January 7th.
January 21st.
January 21st.
January 21st, 7:30.
All right. Thank you. All righty. Any discussions you roll in, and you can duck that out in the hallway. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, you all have good evenings. All right, next item on the agenda is authorization to advertise. First item, we got three of them. First item is 2019-12-01, Brian and Ann Connolly, a request for a conditional use permit for short-term tourist rental. The property is located at 64 Rocky Lane and identified on Tax Map 28B, Section 1, S-Lot 4A. The property is owned agricultural and located in the South River Magisterial District. And I believe that's Mr. Windling again.
That's correct. Yes, Mr. and Mrs. Connolly, we'd like to convert this simple dwelling well to use it as a short-term tourist rental. Miss Connolly has owned the property since 2015. They live within 15 minutes of the property, so they would be the acting property managers, excuse me. They've invested a significant number of improvements in the structure. It was built in 1942, as a two-bedroom dwelling. And again, it comes down to kind of recouping their costs and expenses, and the cost of taxes and maintenance for the property. A waiver of a 100-foot setback from the adjacent dwelling is being requested, as the neighboring dwelling is setback 63 feet. A letter from the adjacent property owners, Mr. and Mrs. Weins, their neighbor was included in your packet, and they have no objections to this. That property boundary between them would be, need to be clearly marked as part of the supplemental regulations, one of those requirements. This is not in the Property Owners Association, it's directly accessed off Rocky Lane, which is a state river. It does fall in place with the future land use map, it meets the comprehensive plan requirements for an agricultural land use. The applicant has submitted documentation from the Health Department for 1993 permit, well permit, and the records show that it's a two-bedroom dwelling allowing a maximum occupancy of four persons at 300 gallons per day. at 300 gallons per day. We will provide additional comments as we receive them from the Health Department. Let's see here. I won't read the conditions, but they will be the standard conditions as it stands right now for short-term tourist rentals based on what has been provided to us. And again, we will, we will use the occupancy number based on what we received from the Health Department. The applicants are here. If you have any questions, then I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thanks, sir. Anybody have any questions real quick?
Nope.
Do the applicants want to say anything? It's not a public hearing or anything. It's just, if you all want to say something, you can. If not, then...
Mr. Windling has done a good job recovering.
He does, okay.
He's, he's already...
I guess my only concern was the setback, but if the neighbor that's in that setback has no complaint about it, I could imagine...
Yeah, they have a complaint.
Yeah, they do. They have a complaint. Exactly, yeah, I agree.
This, I'll just bash you apart. Standing by racial procedure for any conditional use permit, one of our is, we do request the applicant to touch base with the adjacent property owners, let them know what type of use. And in this case, Mr. Connolly contacted us and we recommended that he do something like that. And so, to have that document with the applicant. Ah, yeah, they actually live down in Bentonville, Brown Town area, so, yeah, so it's a short distance.
I don't mean that that was a guy I know where it... So they're close by, so if something...
They would like to pass the property.
I got you, yeah. I'm, I'm going.
Any other questions, concerns, comments?
Before we go any further on that, I move the planning commission authorize the proposed conditional use permit request for advertisement for a public hearing.
Perfect.
Motion is second. Any other questions, concerns, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. You'll be at a public hearing next month. All right, thank you. Next item is 2019-12-02. Damon and Robin Feldman, a request for a conditional use permit for a short-term tourist rental. We're hitting those lots tonight. The property is located at 53 Crystal River Road and identified on Tax Map 41B as Lot 7. The property is owned agricultural and located in the South River Magisterial District. And Mr. Windling is back up again.
Yeah, this, this property is a second home to the Feldmans who do live out of the county. They would be wanting to rent it part-time approximately 20 weekends a year because they do plan to use the home themselves. Again, it's rental to offset some of those costs and mortgages, taxes and maintenance of the property. They do hope that the county benefits economically, which apparently they do. We do receive a number of transient lodging taxes from some of the units that we have. This property is located in an area that portions of the property in the special flood hazard area, but the structure itself is not in the special flood hazard area. It does meet the required setbacks for the adjacent dwellings. It's 744 feet. It's a newer, it's pretty much a brand-new home. Crystal River does have a chain across the entrance to it, which is a private road. It does access about seven other properties, one other dwelling. They have a road maintenance agreement. The adjacent property owner who is, owns the dwelling did have some concerns regarding the, you know, well, basically privacy and security of the properties in this case. So, I discussed this with Mr. Feldman. We kind of looked at the property and kind of came up with another idea, an idea of putting an additional gate or chain to the north of his dwelling, but on his property and on the neighbor's property. The road literally bisects the neighbors and his property, but before the seven other vacant properties in this one other house. And that would be, you know, either a key, key or a kind of a lock. There is a tree line right there in the middle of this property that they could do that and, you know, that, that may be sufficient to meet the requests of the adjacent property owners. Okay? We would put something like that on as a condition for this particular property.
Are we okay with the main access or the main...
Yeah, the main access is from...
All the main roads, you gotta...
Right, there would be essentially two, two chains that anybody would have to go through beyond his house. But a single chain, and the way they work now is actually daisy chained. He has a, I believe, he has the combo lock and then there's a keyed lock. So they're kind of daisy chained, so he could give out the combo for that and then the key from the... So, that's the really only significant thing. Again, this is not a...
My fault was saying that. It's great for a public hearing with a gate access to...
This is more of a farm gate, the chain, so they can...
Farm gate, okay.
This is the first property, so they can literally just move the gate to the head. Everybody else is protected.
That's what I'm thinking. I just want to make sure.
But the difference is, is it is just, I believe, a chain, you know, going across versus, there was, there's literally a gate in Mr. Henry. I'm sure he's seen that one at River Ridge somewhere. Anyway, property owner's here and I'd be glad to answer any... Yeah, if you have any other questions.
Anybody have any questions at the moment? Does the property owner wish to come up and say anything at all, or it's not a public hearing, it's just...
I'll, I'll just...
Well, if you do, you got to come up and speak and name an address, please, if you don't mind. You know, you can say what you want.
Sure, I'll be real quick. Sure. So Damon Feldman, 11222 Fairway and Reston. I just want to say it is different than the gated community in that it's actually, I have a gate on my property and people have a right of way through that gate. I'm happy to make sure everybody has a right of way, but it is my gate. It's not like a gated property.
Right, right. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anybody else have any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning commission authorize the proposed conditional use permit request for advertisement for a public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second. Anybody else have anything to add? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. It'll be on the public hearing for next month. Thank you, sir. Next item is 2019-12-03. Randall S. Cars, a request for a conditional use permit for a facility for artisan and craftsman trades not exceeding 5,000 square feet in size. The use will be for custom carpentry. The property is located at 773 East Step Road, identified on Tax Map 19 as Lot 62. The property is owned agricultural and located in the Fort Magisterial District. And I believe that's Mr. Petty finally.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for an artisan and craftsman facility in order to expand their small-scale woodworking business. The applicant is planning to build a workshop with this. It's a brand-new building and it'll be adjacent to their dwelling that is on this property. The structure will not exceed 5,000 square feet per the code. And the business will have two to four full-time employees and the hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, nine to five. All power tools and dust collection systems will be secured within the building and customers will be allowed to visit on a by appointment basis only. Business builds custom wood components currently for stairs, built-in cabinets and furniture. And they'll be storing raw materials in the new structure, which includes prefabricated cabinets, drawers and hardware. They plan to access water using an existing well on the property and they plan to replace the existing septic system with a new one that can accommodate both the dwelling that's existing and the new workshop. The dwelling is served currently by Route 646 East Step Road. The state-maintained road ends about halfway through the property. And then the workshop where it's proposed will be adjacent to the private access easement. This is currently, it is in line with comprehensive plan. It is one of the conditional use permit uses in the Ag District, though there are no supplemental regulations in the Warren County zoning ordinance. We use, obviously, we have a few of these within the county and use those conditions kind of based on this one. I will go through some of those since we don't get a lot of these permits. But the applicant, number one, the applicant shall comply with all Warren County building inspections, Warren County Health Department and Warren County Fire Marshal regulations and requirements. I will make note that we did reach out to the Fire Marshal for comments, given that they will be storing raw materials and it's woodworking, just to make sure that everything's stored properly and safe. The hours of operation is stated 9:00 a.m., 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. The business shall have no more than six employees and off-street parking shall be available for the staff. The applicant shall plant a landscape buffer between the workshop and the adjacent parcel to the south consisting of trees, shrubs approved by county planning staff. Noise measured at the nearest property line shall not exceed 60 decibels. Customer visitation shall be limited on a by appointment basis with no more than one customer vehicle at a time and off-street parking shall be available for customers. Any trash and debris related to the business shall be removed on a weekly basis and any exterior light fixture shall be full cut off, fully shielded and pointed downward. The condition number four, to the south of the property, there's a power line easement that runs through there that's obviously clear-cut. And so that would be area that doesn't have a lot of vegetation, so, you know, landscape buffer may want to be provided there to provide some screening to that joining property owner. That's why we decided on that end. And in speaking with the applicant, he doesn't expect there to be a lot of customers as most of their work is done in the Northern Virginia area and at the customers' homes. So really, they just fabricate everything here and then take it off-site. The applicant is here. His statement of justification is in here. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. And again, the applicant is here.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions at the moment? Can't wish to say anything at all?
You have no questions, I'm good.
I don't see any issues whatsoever, but...
I like that, you know, small businesses.
I know.
Alvin's was a big success out near me. He's in my district, familiar with the area.
Yep.
He's got enough setback, that's a big thing.
I had a little concern with the noise that a wood shaper could make with a close neighbor, but the closest was 260 feet and inside a building. It shouldn't be an issue.
Take a motion.
I'll take a motion right away.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission authorize the proposed conditional use permit request for advertisement for a public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other comments, questions, concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Public hearing will be next month, sir. Thank you very much. Next item is commission matters. We've finished public hearings and authorizations to advertise, so we're on commission matters. And we start with commission members, so that means Mr. Naude. You're first up, sir. Sorry, your mark.
Yes, sir. I'm always first. Well, yeah, I start, well, I start over there. Sorry, I start over there. I follow that. I just go there and work my way back because I'm heading back to staff, so there you go.
This Saturday is the property owner's Shando Farms Christmas party. And Santa Claus will be there. Cookies and crafts starts at 5:00, goes at 7:00. All of you guys are invited if you wish to attend.
All right.
Okay. And the other item I had was, it's been a pleasure working with all of you guys.
Planning Department.
I remember the first meeting I was at, it was like lost. But it's been a real pleasure working with all of you. I will miss all of you. I may show up at the first meeting just to see how that goes.
See how it shakes up.
But thank you very much for the opportunity to work with you all.
Sir, it's been a pleasure.
To your hospitality.
It's been a pleasure having you here and you, your input has been valuable and we appreciate it. Mr. Myers?
Only thing I've got is, kind of hate to see all three of you go, but it has truly been a pleasure. I'm sure we'll bump into each other again, so we're still a small county.
Maybe, we might. I guess it's me now. It's been a pleasure. I've worked with, past eight years, it's been, the commission's been relatively the same, but it's changed a little bit, but everybody's been wonderful to work with over the years. And I got no complaints whatsoever. And aside from that noise we're hearing right now. Because the audio, the audio system is messing up right now, so there you go. That's my one complaint, I'll give you that one. But over the eight years, the folks I've worked with on the commission have been wonderful. We've been pretty solid and pretty united on most everything. And that's been a very great pleasure to work with folks that are like that, so I got no complaints.
So I can add one thing too. You first moved to Warren County in front of Roy. You were literally my next-door neighbor. You probably saw me up there just going, "Oh, my God."
Yeah, I knew who you were. Literally lived right...
Literally, you're right. Our property lines butt.
Exactly. Literally lived right behind you in town, so, yeah. But, but no, it's been a pleasure and I appreciate everything. Staff has been wonderful to work with. Everybody's been great, so I just, I don't know what to say. Other than Mr. Henry, it's up to you now.
I have nothing special, but yeah, I would like to reiterate that I remember coming here myself and being very greedy and it was nice to have some people with experience to kind of point me in the right direction that I definitely needed. But, you know, the knowledge and experience and... The sad part is that it'd just be two of us just got any experience and then fingers crossed they'll do a good job and surely will. But it was a lot easier just having it like it is.
Exactly. And you'll get to pass the torch hard next month.
Now, it's your turn, you.
Yeah, okay, well, I'll do the best I can though.
You're up there, you're gonna do it.
But no, thanks, thanks a lot for going, yeah, thanks. No, thanks a lot and wish y'all best of luck.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Ms. Nelson, here we go.
I feel like a permanent fixture. I've been here so long. I've seen all of you come and go.
How many, how many years has it been for you?
15.
15, well...
And I don't even remember being new. I mean, it's been so long. But it has been really, truly a pleasure. I have enjoyed the meetings and learned so much, you know. About the county and, you know, I've had my chance to get my input. I have worked with the staff. It's wonderful. I remember Taryn wasn't even the planning director when I came. I mean, she was just what your title, title was.
Was she even out of school then?
Barely. Anyway, I mean, I'll miss you guys and staff particularly. I really will miss the staff.
Staff has been wonderful.
Staff has been wonderful. Totally depend on staff and they've just been wonderful to work with. And so, I'll miss that, but other than that, I'm old and I'm ready to retire. Been here a long time. And I actually like you guys, you know, I'll miss you guys, but...
You actually like us?
I like you.
That's what I said, you actually like us. Actually like, that's not...
I do.
That's a better...
So if I drive by your place and I see you shaking that car at home on the side.
Stop and say hello.
I'll stop in and say hi. Okay.
Well, I'll tell you, and just to reiterate...
You can catch me home, that's the...
There you go. But just to reiterate, it's just, it's been a pleasure, I mean...
It's been fun to...
Well, we had, yeah, we had fun. No, yeah, gosh, we had fun, but it's been a pleasure because we're all kind of like-minded in a sense. We may disagree on a few things, that's fine. But there's no bickering, there's no fighting, there's no, there's no, there's none of that garbage that I hear of a ton on other commissions and other boards and this, that and the other. And so that's...
That is a big plus.
It's been a huge plus because we all are similar-minded and we don't have to agree on everything. I get that, that's fine. And we can agree to disagree, whatever, but we all respect each other greatly. And that's made this job a whole lot better, so there you go.
It has.
All right, everybody has an agenda and I think all of ours is what we say. Is ours is the same, yeah. Ours is the same thing. It's just, we're all the same, so, yeah. Which has made it fun. So next month, good luck to you two.
Oh, I've got, I've got moral confidence in them coming.
We'll see what you two have, so. I hope it, I really hope it is, to tell you the truth. I really hope it is. I'd love to see it just continue nice and smooth and so, anyways...
I hope it, I really hope it is, to tell you the truth. I really hope it is. I'd, I'd love to see it just continue nice and smooth, and so, um, anyways...
Especially from you, Rob.
Oh, yeah. No, no, I know. I really want, I'd really like to see it be nice and smooth for you all, and, and I really want the new commission next, next year, next month, whatever it is, um, is smooth and running, and you all just keep on praying.
You'll have to train them. That's the intent. Don't train them.
There you go. All right, I'm down to the county attorney. We've never heard a peep out of her. She even here.
Well, I don't have anything to report before the outgoing members. I know I'm only here as a pair for a very short period of time, but it has been a pleasure getting to know you and working with you. I wish you all the best.
We're all still around, all right?
Well, good.
We're not, we're not, yeah, we're not running. We're all here local, so, yeah, ain't no big deal. All right, planning director, we don't care. Oh, I'm sorry, planning director. I'm sorry, I read that wrong. Yep, it says don't care on the notes here. I don't know why. Why'd you put that in there?
Oh, you better make that speech. Are you gonna make your speech? Yesterday, she said...
Oh, she gotta make a speech?
She had a speech over there.
Do we all need to sing for ourselves, then?
And the chairman just gave her a chance to even say a word.
All right, Ms. Logan, yes, ma'am, what do you have for us?
There's so much I want to say.
All right, keep it brief.
I will. No, just...
No, that's a joke. It's a joke.
No, I will. I'm gonna read everything I have in here. But I'm gonna, I will greatly miss all you, you three, so... Um, and I do think, we were talking as staff, you know, what, there's so much we want to say, but we can definitely say that there's so many tough decisions you all have had to make over the years with the rains. Been here fifteen, Scott, twelve, eight, and then rough five. And lots of tough decisions, just like tonight, even every meeting, we have tough decisions to make. And, and the one thing that we all definitely think that you fairly represented all the sense of your decisions, so, um, we as staff have a lot of respect for all of you. So, we've really enjoyed working, um, with you all, and we'll continue to enjoy working with you and Robert. And, um, yeah, I mean, a lot's been accomplished. Just multiple comp plan reviews and keeping up to date capital permit plan, and I try to put in your resolutions of all of the projects that have been implemented and your time on the commission, so, it's a lot. I just, we thank you for your service to the community. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you so much.
And there's a Christmas luncheon next Wednesday, I'll have to let you all know, at the fire hall across the road.
Across the road, mm-hmm.
Twelve to two.
All right.
So, thank you.
Thank you. No, we're not even going there. We should...
I'm gonna adjourn right now. Thanks, man.
I wanted to point out these, uh, spreadsheets, though. Uh, we did, we did this month provide spreadsheets for the artisan craft and trade and the short-term tourist rental, so next month, Mr. Myers, Mr. Henry, if you, you know, I'll look that over, and we'll have, we'll try and do this every month for various uses upcoming here. Um, I just want to thank you. You, as planning commissioners, exemplify what community volunteerism is about, and we appreciate your professional expertise that you bring to your positions and your dedication that you have, uh, shown to us and professionalism. And so, uh, you know, I can't, I, I can speak for everybody, and Taryn has. We just, we really, it's been a pleasure working with all, each and every one of you, and, uh, if any of you would like to volunteer for our Census twenty-twenty Complete Count Committee, uh, please contact your supervisor or Taryn or Mr. Stanley, and, uh, we're happy to have you, so, yeah. That's all I have to say. Thank you, and have a blessed Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Winling. Mr. Petty?
Uh, business as usual in the zoning office. Uh, I've only been here two years, so I don't know if I can say as many good things about you as the rest of the group, but I truly do appreciate you from what you guys do as planning commission as both, uh, staff and a citizen of Warren County growing up here, so you guys have a vital role of shaping the future of this community, and I appreciate everything that you've done and look forward to continuing working with you and Robert. Um, but the three of you, we'll, we'll see you around town, county for sure, so, thank you.
I'll come here and speak during the, what was it, the, uh, public presentation period. Maybe I'll get up and speak then and just harass, just to harass these two just for fun of it, you know, so... Can we get a... Exactly. Can we get a deputy in here? So, anyways, um, thank you very much. I appreciate all the attendance, and, um, it's, like I said, it's been, been really good. I've enjoyed it. It's not, and, and as an engineer, I work in different jurisdictions all over the place, and I see bickering all the time. That's what I like about it. There's no bickering here. It's, everybody just works and tries to get things done, so, that's what I like, so...
Before you close, Mr. Chairman, I usually don't comment, but I would...
Oh, yes, to sit. Yes, what do you got?
I just want to say thank you to all of you. Um, it's already been said, but you're all very civil, and you're all very respectful, and it has been a pleasure for almost six years to work with all of you. You know where we are. Our door is open, so pop in and say hello, and I wish all of you a very Merry Christmas and a year full of blessings in twenty-twenty.
Thank you very much, Mr. Winling. Same in kind, same in kind.
As upon extent, happy, joy, joy, or whatever holiday you aim one side of your face.
Exactly. Merry Christmas and enjoy it, so, um, and I'll probably be back because I got projects in the county, and I may have to come before this commission at some point. You never know.
Hopefully, you can be on that side.
I'll be at the podium at some point there.
He was saying he hopes so.
Yeah, and so...
Yeah, no, yeah, I hope so.
You gotta say your name and address. Don't forget.
I care, I care to you, I, I care to you, I will. I'll forget. So, um, so what do we do now?
Move to adjourn.
We have some cookies and hunch. We would just went on to that.
Cookies? Oh, okay. Very good. Well, I guess that means we're gonna talk for about another hour or two.
Move to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion that we adjourn.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Motion second. Meeting is closed. Thank you all very much.